We welcome everyone. I call the school board meeting to order at 7:00 o'clock if we can all stand and say the pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, correspondence, Brian?
Two things to share with the board this evening. We received emails from the New Boston Supervisor of the Checklist and our Assistant Town Moderator thanking Goffstown High School for sending students from Ro'Kappa to help with the last election. So, two great emails, I thought you'd appreciate seeing that our high school kids were volunteering at the election.
Great, thank you. All right, good news, commendations. Brady, do you want to start?
Yep, I got good chucked today.
All right.
So, first off, on November 7th and 8th, GHS students put on a great performance of Radium Girls, a play highlighting the struggles of factory girls working with radium before lots of workers' rights were really established. They had one in-school performance and then two after-school performances, and all three were very successful. On a similar note, the Performing Arts Department is switching over to their next project and working on a production of Andrew Lloyd Webber's Phantom of the Opera, which will be performed in February. One last thing from the Performing Arts is definitely a much lighter one than the other two shows, is the upcoming performance of The Nutcracker, which is a ballet which will be performed in December by GHS dance students. Mrs. Barisi and Mr. McDermott continue to offer future planning opportunities for all. Last week, they took a group to the Bringing Back the Trades event sponsored by the state. Winter sports registrations are open, and all of the information is online and in Power School. Let me see what else I have here. Members of Student Council went to Waterville Valley two weeks ago where they met with some speakers who taught them different aspects of leadership and like stepping out of their comfort zones and how to really get other people to work with you. And then Student Council also had their Veterans Day breakfast recently where they had veterans from the community come in, students talked to them, interacted with them, got to know their stories a little bit, and then presented it out to the rest of the people there. And that was a great time. That's all.
Awesome, thank you Brady. Mr. Davis?
All right, so on Friday, we had a group of social studies teachers from Mountain View that attended the New Hampshire Council of Social Studies Teachers. They reported that it was a wonderful conference with many breakout sessions covering topics from like inquiry-based teaching and social studies to the challenges of trying to find good primary sources for teaching. We have the food drive that is underway, started on the, or goes until the 22nd. They're hoping to break last year's record of 3,522, or 52 cans. Right now, it's looking good, but we can definitely use some more cans to get over the top. I found a cool little tidbit out about our student government. At Halloween, they put together what they called boo bags, and they gave them to all the bus drivers and the custodians at NVMS, which I thought was kind of a cool way of saying thank you for all you do and that we appreciate you.
Nice.
On December 5th and 6th, the NVMS students will be putting on the Fearsome Pirate Frank, which is a sake, it's about a Shakespearean actor who's playing a pirate who becomes kidnapped by that pirate. And he's forced to work on his ship. It's kind of a comedy about the life of, in times of a so-called pirate. Our librarian has put together a very cool staff activity that's going to be taking place tomorrow. She's asked the knotted friends of Merrimack to come in, and they're going to be doing a terrarium workshop for the staff. So anybody who signed up will be, can stay after school tomorrow and kind of hang out and build the terrarium and give some time to kind of socialize and chat outside of the normal school day. Our library, we have the book fair that's coming up on December 2nd through the 6th. And all that money goes to kind of help support the teachers and the students. Our librarian is really good about reaching out to the departments and kind of finding out what we need, and she uses that money to make sure that we have all the text and digital resources that we need to do our units. And we have the winter concert that our students are getting ready to perform here that's going to be coming up on December 7th. The band begins at 9:00 a.m., followed by the strings and the chorus at 1:00. The book fair will also be open during that time, and they offer free gift dropping for any purchase, and that tends to be a pretty big fundraiser for the library. And lastly, our winter sports tryouts and practices are kind of well underway at this point.
A lot going on.
And that's it from Mountain View.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Hi, Ms. Bean, go ahead, do you have anything?
Hi, I have a lot for you.
Okay.
Okay. I think our high school teachers are getting involved, getting them involved anyways. All right, Culinary Club will be going on in-school field trips to the Goffstown High School kitchen. Megan Bizarro is their liaison, and students will be going in groups of four to learn about the different jobs and, jobs and functions of a large industrial kitchen. They will also be volunteering their time at Pie in the Sky. The club meets on Mondays, and if any board members would like to visit them, just give them a heads up and they'd love to see you. Out of all high school athletes, only 7% will continue their athletic careers at college level. On November 13th, GHS held a national letter of intent event. We had 12 seniors who signed their letters of commitment to continue their athletic careers at the next level. This was all possible because of Marissa McLaughlin organizing the event. We had two Division I athletes, Noah Durham going on to Stone Hill College to play baseball, and Lucinda Exner going on to Dartmouth to play on their equestrian team. We had two, four Division II athletes, Ari Prizoni with, going on to Eckhart College to play women's soccer. Charlie Gallione going on to St. Anselms to play on their bowling team. Morgan Dodge going on to the University of, University of Montevello to play women's lacrosse. We had six Division III athletes, Adam LaFon playing Thomas College baseball. Sam Chapman playing, going on to Plymouth State playing men's lacrosse. Dylan Gardett also going on to Plymouth State to play baseball. Laura Cuddy going to Western New England University to play women's lacrosse. Molly Breka going on to Wheaton College to play field hockey. And Julian Danis to going, going on to Stevens Institute of Technology to play women's volleyball. That's quite a crew.
It is.
Nine members of our GHS peer outreach, as well as co-advisors Sean Webb and Charisse Seltzer, our school nurse and our assistant counselor, attended a full-day youth empowerment training in Brentwood, New Hampshire on Friday, November 15th. The event was sponsored by Dover Youth to Youth, and they learned how to use acting and other effective techniques for communicating to other youth about the importance of addressing issues related to drug and alcohol prevention. Over 140 other teens from a dozen schools also attended the peer outreach event, and all agreed it was meaningful and they learned a lot. Just a reminder to the board that the Movement and Dance Company will be performing our annual Nutcracker Show Saturday, December 7th at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. This includes students from all the classes, as well as other students, and some children of the faculty, and sales will be on, be held starting soon. I'll update you when they do that. School counseling and Kurt McDermott have made an effort to expose students to different career opportunities. This fall, GHS has taken students on several field trips. Thirty-five students attended the Bring Back the Trades event on November 15th, engaging with more than 50 employers representing full spectrum of trade careers available to New Hampshire. Twelve students toured the Granite State Manufacturing Facility and learned about pathways and careers in the industry. Seventeen students attended the Construction Career Day where they interacted with employers across New England and had the opportunity to operate forestry, electrical, welding, plumbing, and excavation equipment. We have an internship initiative, so GHS has secured 10 spots for students to attend the Dartmouth Hitchcock Workforce Readiness Institute, shadowing opportunities in radiology and physical occupational therapy careers. Classroom, they also came, school, some of these groups also came into our classrooms. Granite State Plumbing and Heating visited students in Mr. Cardona's classes. Students experienced a pipe, pipe welding demo and learned about careers in plumbing and HVAC. And Manchester Community College Eddie Curran, an HVAC department chair, spoke to multiple classes about the free MCC courses for high school students. In a commendable demonstration of city civic engagement, 36 dedicated members of Ro'Kappa National Social Studies Honors participated in working on the polls. They were deployed across several locations, including New Boston Central School, Goffstown High School, Bartlett Elementary School, and contributed to various tasks. Their responsibilities included setting up polling stations, assisting with the breakdown of post-election, and also welcoming voters as readers, and finally, processing absentee ballots. We're incredibly proud of our Ro'Kappa members for stepping up to serve the communities during such an important civic event.
Christine, if I could interrupt, having someone who works the polls, those students were unbelievable. The amount of work that they did throughout the day and at night, I think it's pretty much safe to say that the election would not have gone off as well as it did, and all the votes tabulated as successful, but were not for those students. So, I hope that they will do it in the years to come, and they were outstanding, A-plus, as I saw a lot of them.
I want them to know that you said that.
Unbelievable. Yeah. They were really good.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Gross, we received two letters from the New Boston election officials.
Yeah. I'm not, I am, I'm a mere-
I know you're a volunteer.
-tabulator at the end.
Are you all set, Mrs. Bean?
Aye, and that is my good news for tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead, Wendy.
Great. So, over at Bartlett, Bartlett's annual turkey trot will be held on Wednesday, November 20th. During this event, they will be gathering pair of non-perishable food items for the Goffstown Food Network. This year, they are inviting parents to participate with their students, and Mrs. Pishpa asked me to give a special welcome to the school board, as she's hoping that some of you may come over to Bartlett and participate in their turkey trot as well. Over at Glen Lake, they are also collecting food to support the Goffstown Food Network through the 21st of November. Students have been counting the donated canned goods as they come in as part of their mathematics lessons. Also, Glen Lake Partnership had their most successful annual fundraiser to date. They raised over $5,000, and that money will go towards enrichment activities, assemblies, and other things to support Glen Lake students. And as always, the Glen Lake students and staff are really thankful for the Glen Lake Partnership that they have, and parents getting involved. And over at Maple Avenue, last Friday, the 4th grade students attended an assembly where two local veterans spoke about the meaning of Veterans Day. It was coordinated by Mrs. Prunault in 4th grade, so a special thank you to her. Next week, students will be competing in their classroom spelling bees. And the winners of the 4th grade spelling bee will go on to compete in the school-wide bee on December 19th, and the school winner will go on to compete in the Scripps Spelling Bee Regional Competition. This event is sponsored by the parent group, and a special thank you to them for putting it all together.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Anyone else, commendations, good news? Go ahead, Ginny.
There was a Goffstown High School student, Samuel Crissa, who, as an Eagle Scout, his project for Maple Avenue, he made a stem chart, a cart, and it has B-bots, supplies, and charging stations on it. And it looks like a very cool thing that the kids are going to have a lot of fun with. And I, I think it's so cool that our Eagle Scout projects frequently stem around giving back to the school.
Yep.
That's awesome. And what I was trying to say at our last meeting about the Student Council, and I never really got it out due to like a bonk on my head earlier in the week, Evelyn O'Hara is Vice President of Goffstown High School student, is Vice President of the New Hampshire Student Councils, and Aubrey Karen is the Central District Vice President, which is part of the State Board as well. And I went to Radium Girls, the show that was put on, oh my God, it was powerful, and I could not believe that high school kids put on a show that was that powerful. Really hard, really a hard show to put on. It amazes me what our, what our kids do continually. And during the day, since it really pertained to science and math students, science and math classes went down during the day to watch it, which was just another way of showing kids, okay, this is how, you know, math and science pertains to everyday life. It really does have a meaning, so it was, I thought it was really cool.
Awesome, thank you Ginny. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jack.
I had the privilege last Friday of going to the Girls Soccer Awards banquet, where they gave the awards. The girls won their, their playoff game this year for the first time in a long time, and I got to hear about the Soccer Boosters Club and all the great work they were doing in supporting both the boys in the girls soccer program at Goffstown and the money that they raised and where it went to.
Awesome, thank you, Jack. Anyone else? Commendations, go ahead.
Yep, listening to the signups, I think it's wonderful that we've gone and expanded our co-curriculars, because when you think of the kids that aren't like the standard athlete, baseball, basketball, football, with different interests and different athletic abilities, are able to sign up at a college, and generally, if you sign up, there's going to be scholarships available for you from that college. So, I, I just think that that's awesome, that we've opened up our co-curricular opportunities to kids, and not only are they able to make a connection at school that keeps their grades up, their behavior up, their attendance up, but also gives some advantages like that down the road. I think it's awesome.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you Ginny. Anyone else, commendations, good news? All right, CNN, we'll move on to public comment. Is there public comment tonight? All right, CNN, so we're moving on to a presentation. Mr. McDermott, are you giving us a presentation tonight? So you guys should have all your information in your packets. It's the GHS Latin Honor System. Anything you want to add to that?
No, just welcome to Mr. McDermott, Curriculum Coordinator from Goffstown High School.
And my boss.
So, I thought I would just tee this up for Kurt before he starts speaking in regard to two different things this evening. The first thing he's going to be bringing to you is a proposal for us to bring CPR training and certification to health classes here at Goffstown High School. This presentation already actually went to both CNE and to the tech committee because there is a tech piece that we needed to talk about, so Kurt's going to talk about that, and we'll be looking for full approval, hopefully, from the board this evening. The second piece he'll be bringing to you is a proposal for us to change away from a traditional rank system to a Latin honor system. And this presentation has been discussed actually at several occasions over at CNE, and it was the recommendation to bring it to the full board. After our last CNE presentation, the committee did ask for Mr. McCann and Mr. McDermott to get some information from parents on how they felt about Latin honor system before we brought it to the board, which is why there was a little bit of a lapse between when we brought it to CNE and brought it to the board, because we wanted to get that parent feedback for Mr. McDermott to be able to share with you this evening.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Kurt?
So first off, I just have to say I had a lovely hike around Kimball Pond this evening with the GHS hiking club, so thank you all for making that happen.
Beautiful day for it.
If we want to start with CPR, we're basically seeking approval for our health classes to offer CPR. The hiccup has been, no company is willing to sign the privacy agreement. This has been vetted though by the tech subcommittee and CNE, as Wendy said. The idea being, our teachers would be trained to offer the service, we would do it in-house. The ultimate goal, getting more people CPR certified, getting our students CPR certified. The budget for the equipment, any equipment that we would need has already been budgeted, so we're just looking for, for moving that forward. And specific to the privacy concerns, data collected from students would include email address, first name and last name. To address privacy concerns, we would propose that parents be allowed to sign a waiver opting their students into the program. This ensures that parents are fully informed and can consent to their child's participation. Those are the broad strokes on that one. If anybody has specific questions, we have your answer.
Anybody have any questions, comments? If we approve this, when would this start?
This would start, I think, immediately.
Okay.
Yeah, it's budgeted for this, in this budget.
For this year?
Yep.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just for giggles, this is, is or is not a credit course?
Yeah, it's a credit course.
It's a credit course, and-
Be part of the health class.
Part of the health class. That was it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else, questions or comments? Go ahead, Ginny.
This came in front of the CNE committee, and the CNE committee recommended this to be accepted by the full school board. And I know my last CPR class cost me over $100, and this is a good class for lifelong learning for families to have. It was pointed out to us that younger people are more apt to respond to an emergency situation than older people are. And Rheta had a really good, maybe show offer to us also. But these kids are going to go home who have siblings, the Heimlich maneuver is included in, in this class, and just the more people that know CPR in a family, the safer their families are. And this is a, a learning tool that they'll bring through their life continually. Denture and child CPR is included in this course, so when they, you know, move on to have their own families, they'll be able to take care of their own little ones safely. So, it, I think it's wonderful that we're bringing this forward to more and more people.
Right, thank you Ginny.
I should add too, it's a state-approved college and career readiness benchmark.
Is that what you were going to say?
That's exactly what I was just going to add.
Yeah.
Nice.
Count towards those graduation requirements as well.
Okay. So we'll need a motion if anybody, go ahead, Jared.
Just a question, because I know that we're talking about certification, and in order to be certified, I say, I take it we're going to be giving students names and things like that to a registry? Is that a problem?
Well, that, so that's, those are the very issues that we had with the other CPR platforms. This is the opt-in portion that was talked about.
I just want to make sure that we're clearly verbalizing that.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Jared. Anyone else, questions, comments? So we're looking for a motion if anybody's ready to give one?
I'll make a motion to approve the CPR training certification at GHS.
Thank you, Rheta. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Caroline, any further discussion? CNN, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you. All right, second part.
Yeah, so we are proposing a move to Latin honors, away from class rank. I don't know how familiar everyone is with the proposal. It's gone through CNE. The basic idea behind it is, well, there's several components. Class honors, class rank, I should say, is subjective. It's dependent upon how big a school you're in, for example. So, if you're from a very small school and you're doing, if you're number one, looks great, but it doesn't have the same weight as being from a very large school. So that's one component. The bigger component that we're noticing is when we publish how students are doing, that creates an unnecessarily competitive environment. So, the students who want to finish, you know, top 10 might be making choices for their own educational career that aren't really advantageous for them, other than they want to stay in that, that top, that top spot. So we're trying to promote a culture of cooperation. We're trying to promote students to take classes that they're interested in, that they actually have a, some sort of passion for, and explore classes that they might, might not otherwise take, in a way that's not going to harm them. And so in order to do that, we're suggesting a move to Latin honors. This would be a general group of students that are recognized for reaching a certain GPA level. We would have three different honor systems at the Latin honors ranking that most people are familiar with. And most colleges are familiar with it as well, so it's also more advantageous in that respect, too. So, specific to this, on October 9th, we invited all parents of 7th and 8th, current 7th and 8th graders to attend a quick informational session and also a focus group prior to the schoology meeting at NVMS. We met with tables full of parents in the library. The response was universally positive. We had one parent reach out to us who wasn't able to attend and ask if we could implement it for other grades as well. So, we're getting, we're seeing a lot of support for it. So that's where it stands right now. We want everyone to know that we've put it out to parents as well, so it's not just something we're trying to propose.
Kurt, if I could also add, in this proposal, this would not impact any students that are currently at Goffstown High School, so they would continue on with the same traditional class rank that we've already had. This would begin with the class of 2029. So, if this is approved, it would go into the program of studies beginning with that group, and again, would not impact any students that are currently at Goffstown High School.
Thank you, Wendy. Anybody, questions, comments?
So that's current 7th graders?
Current 8th grade.
Current 8th grade.
Correct.
We invited parents of 7th and 8th graders. Parents of 8th grade.
Go ahead, Jared.
It's been a while since I've attended a graduation for a high school. Valedictorian and valedictorian usually speak. With this proposal, how does that change?
That's something that we're going to have to explore. We're looking forward to it. It's an opportunity truly to honor students who are doing very well in other categories of the school, who have traditionally not been honored in events like that.
Are you, good, looks like-
They haven't decided yet.
Yeah, well, that, that's kind of what it's come down to, so.
We're not doing a vote tonight?
Oh, we aren't doing a vote tonight on this. Okay, good for now. Thank you.
Ginny, did you have a question you had to hand out?
Yeah, something that I thought was really interesting about this was, right now, a lot of kids are just taking AP classes, you know, because that gives them the points that they need to, you know, to get-
Rank.
-to be the valedictorian or in the top 10. But this program gives them the opportunity to take an honor class in music, which is never something that they've been able to do before without losing points towards their top 10 or their valedictorian. So this gives kids really, if you're, if you're going to college for music, but you can't take the high-level music classes because you want to get into a certain school, that's really sad. So, this kind of a program lets kids take what they need for, what they're looking to do later on in their life, or what their interest is, without harming their high school grade point average, so to speak. So, I thought this was really good. I know Kim has worked in a lot of classes to, to bring those kinds of classes to higher honors levels. So I think it's good for kids to be able to take what they want, take the classes they need to do what they, the skills that they want to go into college for, you know, whatever their major is going to be later on, so it made a lot of sense to me.
Thank you Ginny. Go ahead, Dan, and then Brady.
So, hearing what Ginny's saying, can you give me a 60-minute rundown of what does that mean?
60 minutes?
I can't take a music course because it won't count towards my GPA or my rank?
I refuse to give you a 60-minute rundown.
Okay, give me longer.
But, yeah. The basic idea is, this will give us an opportunity-
Not, not the new one, the old one. What, what we are replacing.
So, the old system, if we replace it, would be, if I want to maintain my status in the top 10, I might be taking AP courses, I might be signing up for V-Lax courses that are AP, not because I'm particularly interested in them, but because I want to maintain that, that top 10 ranking.
How do you, why would you lose the top 10 ranking?
By taking a different course. Because my peers, if they're equally motivated, are going to be trying to do those things as well.
Because the AP courses are weighted heavier.
Exactly.
So kids are taking AP courses and they're maybe not taking creative welding.
Correct.
Even though I might be interested in that, I'm not going to waste a class on creative welding, because it's not AP, it's not honors, it's not ranked higher.
So I can get a 4.0 in creative welding, but I can get a 4.5 in the honors class? Is that kind of like throwing numbers out?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
Sorry, I assumed a basic level of familiarity, but-
Very basic. Yep, I mean, okay, and so- Yep. I mean, okay, and so if we're gonna go to the Latin honors, when I graduated from college many decades ago, I also had a class rank plus the Latin honors. So I guess I'd be curious to see what that last piece of the puzzle that says recognizing Latin honor students and developing a plan to select student speakers for graduation. That's, would be interesting to see how that works.
Well, we have one system now.
Yep.
Right, that we've used to select those speakers, first, second, and third. This would be an opportunity to honor other kids who don't get honored, quite frankly. So the system we're proposing is a 4.0 or higher, summa cum laude. 3.8 to 3.99 is magna cum laude. And cum laude would be 3.6 to 3.79.
Which is pretty normal.
And if you want, if you absolutely desperately need your class rank, that's not information that we're going to keep hidden. It's just not something that we're going to prioritize under the new proposal. Should it be approved?
Thanks, Dan. Go ahead, Brady. I saw your hand up.
Kind of just from like a student perspective on this, class rank is such a, I don't wanna call it a dumb thing because I understand why it exists, but it causes so much strain on students. And like, I've seen it. I've seen this year, I've had friends in tiers over an A minus instead of an A. Last year, I had a friend who felt they were falling behind because they were sixth in their class and they felt they could be doing better. And I just, there's, especially in, like, some of our, like, our upperclassmen, there's just so much competition and it kind of, as Mr. McDermott was saying, takes away from some of the actual educational aspects of it and being able to pursue what you're doing. And it's just focusing on these, like, numbers. And I feel it takes away from students' mental health. That's all.
We had a previous valedictorian offer up a quote. I reached out to him. Caleb Agner, he was 2022's valedictorian, he said, "The additional stress that a ranking system can place on already stressed high school students, my past self included, is reason enough to move to a less competitive system." Former school board.
Yes, he was our student.
My daughter graduated number three and when she was a sophomore, she wanted to go to an Ivy. And by the time she started applying to colleges, she didn't apply to any Ivies because she said, "I can't do that anymore because it was so intense." And she was in a super competitive top six. Joyce Lewis said they hadn't had a class that competitive, like, with, they were like point one away from each other. And she chose to go to UVM. She's getting an excellent education there. But she chose that because she said, "I wanna do what's best for me and whatever I do in a class is gonna be good enough and I don't have to stress about beating the person that's ahead of me." So it is stressful to the kids to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Go ahead, Rheta.
Just to address Jared's question, we did talk a lot about, you know, how, how do, you know, who do you have speak? So we did give some time to that, but as was mentioned, it's not part of the proposal. That's something that we'll need more input to figure out how that gets done. But during that meeting, I did ask, you know, so right now, we have, you know, the, the top three, also the top 10 are recognized. And I had asked how, how many students might be recognized at the summa cum laude? And it was, if I remember correctly, it was around 100 students. So you're able to recognize the academic achievement without creating that competitiveness and playing games to get a higher ranking, which does not seem like it's the best way to get an education. So there was a lot of discussion and it's a big move.
Thank you, Rheta. Ginny, go ahead.
I can remember with one of my own kids, what was happening was a person would get a 95 and then the other person who got a 94 would go to the teacher and argue about, "Well, they did this so that they should get, like, a 96 to beat the person who got the 95." And that's what kids were doing all the time, dragging the teachers nuts. But also, like, fighting over one point against each other. And, you know, she's finally just said, "Done. I don't really, really care about this anymore. Do my work." And it just wasn't worth the arguing over one point, two points. And so this is a system that's better. Kids get to, to do more, to think more, to experience more and, and still get into the college that they want.
Go ahead, Dan.
So if we think it's such a good system to go to the Latin honors, why are we suffering another four years with the traditional one? Is there some kind of segue we can do for the current freshman class, sophomore class? You see where I'm going? Without, you know, they're, they're used to that, but I've heard a lot of stress going on. I mean, I mean, it makes sense to start with the eighth grade because they haven't started, but is there a segue for, for current students in high school so we kinda help relieve that tension immediately?
Yeah, I would say if that's the will of the board, then we will absolutely explore that.
How could we do that?
I think we have to think about that because when we do our eighth grade transition meetings with parents and students, we talk about this is what the next four years look like. And starting with their freshman year, I believe GHS honors those top 10 students every year. So there are students that are currently freshmen and sophomores that have already been going through that process of being in the top 10. So we'd really have to talk about that. And I, I'd want some parent feedback, to be honest with you, Dan, of what that would look like because that's not how we presented it when the students were in eighth grade.
Understand.
So that's just something that I think we'd really have to consider because I would want parents to know that.
Sure.
When they're coming in. Because students are choosing their schedule based on all of the information we present. So that's just one thing I'd mention.
Now, is this something you need a decision tonight or a decision in the future? What is the thought process here?
I mean, what's the timeline we're looking for here?
So the hope is, is if the board is not ready to make an approval this evening, that we would embed it into the program of studies, which is coming to CNE in December. And then it would come, if it is approved again as part of the program of studies, it would come to the board after that and it would be part of that program for full board approval if you're not ready to make that, that move this evening. So that would be the next, what I would assume we would do for Goffstown High School.
Okay. So what does the board think?
CNE did not formally vote on this.
To recommend to the full board?
We were leaving it to go to parents and.
Okay. So it's gonna come back to you?
Yeah.
So that's the recommendation, wait for it to come back to you and then come back to us?
I just gotta note, current ninth graders are not being class ranked now. Mrs. McCann just shared with me.
Okay.
So if, to Mr. Cludier's question, there, there might be a little more flexibility with current ninth graders. I would, I would certainly want Mrs. McCann to weigh in on that, but she shared with me that.
Because the semester isn't over yet. You're right. So they have not been ranked yet because the semester is not over.
Haven't been ranked.
Correct.
And this is a cultural change.
Yeah.
So, and, and recognize that this really impacts our most academically inclined students and to create a culture where kids are collaborating and working together and want each other to do well instead of fighting about who's gonna get the point 0.1 difference on a grade. That's the culture you want.
Agreed.
So it's gonna come back to you and then it'll come back to us? That's the plan? And if we have questions, we can reach out?
Are you guys good with that?
Yep. So if, if it's okay with the board, it will come back to CNE as part of the program of studies presentation that we're doing in December. And then rather than a separate presentation, it will be part of the program of studies presentation that comes to the board.
Is that an okay timeline if you're looking to implement for ninth grade? Does that make it tight or?
I can't answer it without exploring it, but I, I don't see any problems with the team we have.
And if, if it does, you can come, bring it back at any time. We can talk about it at a, a meeting and we can bring it back at any time, I think.
We could, but if, if CNE was looking for it to go back to CNE, our next meeting isn't until December, which is why I said we would bring it as part of the program of studies.
Well, what's the point of bringing it back? I think the only point of bringing it back would be if we wanted to add the ninth grade.
Right.
Otherwise, this is the, this is the proposal.
Go ahead, Rheta.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna ask, what else do we need to know to? I mean, are we not sure if we want to do this? Could we approve this and then say, "Let's start with the ninth grade"? Could we keep the ranking for those that are in ninth grade, but maybe they also get the Latin honors if they choose to put that on their college application? So, I mean, I think there's some options, but I'm just wondering why. Is there a reason we want to delay? And if so, what, what more information do we need to make a decision?
Go ahead, Jared.
Implementation plan and who speaks at graduation, those are two important things. And unless we have that, I'm not comfortable voting on it. I, I'm very big in meritocracy. I think that this is a great plan. But I think healthy, healthy competition is very good and is very needed. But I would like to know what's gonna be the determining factor for who's actually speaking in front of a group of friends and family. Because that is an important thing that people do look forward to. And there is a competition for that. So is it gonna be voted on? Or is it gonna be, we're gonna still maintain class rank for those speaking positions? That's something that I'd like to have some determination on so I know how I'm voting.
So we'd want that to be part of the discussion and part of the proposal. So if that piece isn't identified, I think what I'm hearing, and I don't know, I'm assuming there might be other board members who would support Mr. Talbot's inquiry. I would think it would be important to figure that out.
Okay. So what is, just to be clear, the directive to us so we can get to work on this?
I think it would be identify how graduation speakers would be made. So what would be the number of speakers? How would those determinations be made? And I think secondarily, it would be what would be the, the challenges around implementing with current ninth grade? And how do you get the voice of current ninth grade parents? So I think some ninth grade parents who have very academic kids might not like this change. But I think the majority of people overwhelmingly would support this.
And is it possible, and stop me if I'm outside of bounds here, to separate the two and say yes or no to the proposal as it stands? And then yes or no to separately implementing something for ninth graders?
I think so.
That would be up to the board.
Let, let me ask this question because I don't have a student or a child in, in a high school. But from those, I'm gonna use the term game theory kind of situations. Are those really seniors and juniors that are taking those types of AP classes?
No.
They're still really going down to the lower grades?
10th grade.
Some of them start doing some of this in eighth grade.
Ninth grade. Yeah. Some in ninth.
So Brady, I'm gonna put you on the spot. And you don't have to answer, but you're on the student council, you haven't talked to a lot of kids. What do you think in general, the kid, your students, your peers would feel? I mean, this is a huge change.
I definitely feel, like, as, as has been said, some of those, like, upper people, top 10, top 20, I think there would be some upsetness there. I do think people kind of vie, I don't, I don't know what the word is. Like, they, they wanna fight for that position.
Yeah.
But I also feel that, like, I have some friends who are, like, less academically achieving. And I feel like there's kind of a perpetuating cycle there where they see that they have no opportunity to be recognized at all. And so even though they're doing well, like, and they're in that 3.8, 3.9 range, they're not in that top 10. They're not in the top 20. So they feel kind of disincentivized from really even trying. Because if they're already not succeeding, what's the point in just a futile effort? So I think definitely switching over would benefit that lower half of students that you'd be looking at. And I also think, even though they might not want to admit it, I think it would definitely be better for those higher-end students. So they, like, as you were saying, they don't have to fight all over point one points on a test or something.
And just to be clear, we're not talking about doing away with competition. We're talking about doing away with competition against someone you're presumably trying to collaborate with in class. Competition still exists, it'd just be against an objective benchmark. So I'm trying to get to this, this place as opposed to I'm trying to take that person down or do better than them because that's gonna make me look good.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you. Just speaking as a parent who has a high school student and who has an eighth grader who this would impact, I, I do already see that stress. And if we're talking about stress being the number one factor of, of impacting our students' mental health these days, if they see this culture, as you said, the climate in which we're saying, "Yeah, well, you are numbered." They're gonna wanna perform to that. I, I do see it already with class selections. My seventh grader hemmed and hawed about taking a world language when they were struggling in math in seventh grade because, "Well, if I don't do that, then I, it sets me up for this in college." No, no. This is seventh and eighth grade. This is when we want you to take that well-rounded course. So just from a, a very anecdotal piece of evidence, I personally feel that if what's coming down to us not voting on this is how the speakers are made, that's, to me, a very inconsequential part. Your AP students are still getting that credit. They're still gonna look great for colleges. Less than 50% of high schools in the country right now do the class rank. Most of them are, that's correct, right from the, from your information. Was, most of them have gone on to Latin honors for good reasons. So it's not that they won't be competitive. It's not that it's not gonna help their transcripts. They're gonna get into the colleges. They're gonna look great for who they want to look great for. But they are gonna be competing against themselves for the higher education that they want not to be better than a peer. So I, I, I hear what you're saying about, I would like to know exactly how this is gonna break down. To me personally, that's minutia that can be handled at an administrative level because truly, if my kid graduates and gets a 3.7, I don't care who speaks. They all did great.
Thank you, Lauren. Go ahead, Bree.
Kind of on that, like, who actually speaks at graduation point, I know it's definitely something that people look forward to. But in retrospect, compared to, like, the actual grades, I'm not sure how, how much it really matters. Like, my sister was there in her class. She gave a speech. I don't remember what she talked about. That was two years ago.
I did. She was great.
It was, it was.
She was great.
It was pretty good.
She didn't do all the places she went out?
She mentioned me in it. That was my favorite part. But like, outside of, like, knowing who actually spoke there, I, what they really say and, like, having them actually do it, I'm not sure how important that really is.
Thank you, Brady.
I gave a speech, but I gave a speech. I graduated 10 in my high school, but I was senior class president and senior class presidents gave speeches.
Speeches, right. So what is the board's privy for tonight? CNE isn't recommending it yet. Do we wanna vote? Do we wanna wait? What is everybody's?
Is, is that accurate about CNE?
I don't know. That's what.
We had just, I believe my remembering is we didn't vote because they were going to, we were going to get more information with the family studies and stuff. I, if people wanna vote tonight, I don't have a problem with it. Rheta, Lauren?
I sat in on that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, I think we can do whatever, whatever is helpful to Kurt and Wendy at this point.
Dan?
I think it's important to follow our edict. And our policy that says, "Get as much information you can before you vote." And there's been some questions from board members to get more information. So I think it'd be important to get that information so that we can actually have an educated vote that perhaps we could get more votes in the affirmative. Because I think it's a great plan, but there's unanswered questions. And unless this is an emergency where there's some detriment that'll occur if we don't vote tonight, it still means we can vote at the first meeting in December or the second meeting in December. I mean, if there's not an emergency tonight, I would rather hold off.
So would you be able to get information to Wendy, bring to us at a next board meeting? Or it doesn't have to go back to CNE, per se, right?
Just, I wanna be clear, though, that we're talking, the questions that still exist on the proposal as it stands. Specifically, we would want to identify how graduation speakers are chosen.
Yep.
As part of this proposal. And that's, that would satisfy the current questions.
Eighth grader. And the ninth graders.
And if we could explore making this program available to current ninth graders and not waiting for the current eighth grade graduating class to matriculate here. Current ninth graders, too.
And I guess I would just want clarity as to whether or not, if, if we can't for some reason make ninth grade happen, does that kill the entire proposal at that point?
I would hope not.
That's the clarity that I want.
Yep.
Yep.
So this could be a separate agenda item on one of the next two meetings whenever. So, this could be a separate agenda item on one of the next two meetings, whenever you're available. It doesn't have to go to CNE and come back with the program studies.
Because we didn't ask for more information. It was kind of like, there will be more information.
Right, from the parents and stuff.
Coming, and, so we'll wait, in my remembering of it. So, it wasn't like that we needed more information to make that decision. And I think people were pretty comfortable with this program, so.
Heather, the CNE committee had asked, when it came to the board, that they would have the parent input portion.
Right.
Because when the high school brought it, they had talked about all the work they had done, other local high schools that had moved to this, all that information, because it's actually come to CNE two or three times. We've kind of been working towards bringing this. And they had asked, when we brought it to the board, to bring that parent input piece, which is the focus group that Mr. McDermott and Mrs. McCann did.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Jack, go ahead.
So, do we offer some type of direction then, as a board? Like, how to select those speakers? Like, all the summa cum laude recipients vote for their three speakers that, you know? Do we draw names out of a hat? Do we flip a coin?
Go ahead, Wendy.
I would ask if the board is okay with it, that Mr. McDermott goes back and talks with the, yeah, GHS administrative team. They also have lead teachers, and I think that they would want to bring this too, to get feedback as well. So, I would ask if the board is okay with, you know, Mr. McDermott bringing that back and bringing it back to the board with some of those specifics.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, to get some stuff. And then bring it within the next, if you can, one of the next two board meetings.
Sure.
Put it on the agenda. Does that work?
And in the meantime, it sounds like the direction is also to start including the changes in the program of studies, because you're working on that now.
Yes.
So, I would say, you guys go full speed on the program of studies.
And that's going to CNE in December?
Yes.
Okay. Does that sound good? Is everybody on the same page with that? Okay. And if you have questions, reach out to Wendy or Mr. McDermott. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Thanks.
All right. So, the next is approving November 4th meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read them? Anybody see anything?
I did.
Okay.
I don't know if it's on the paper copy, but Miss Maybe, Mrs. Moore, can you tell me? I thought that on page 10 of 12, the motion was $5,000 budget transfer, not four. Because we were talking about a $5,000 at the discussion in the beginning. Remember that, period?
Oh, here it is, at the end.
What was that, what page was that on?
It's 10 of 12, at the bottom.
Yeah, the last paragraph on page 10 of 12. That was so that we could identify and vote in favor unanimously.
Is the question whether the $4,000 number is accurate?
Yes. I believe the motion was five, but.
Yeah, doesn't it?
That's what I thought I heard and voted on, because I think, Scott, you were talking about it was going to cost 5,000.
Is that on page eight of 12, where it's other? Is that, because there's 5,000 there?
Yeah.
Yeah. It matched that number.
Yeah, so it should be 5,000, right?
Yeah. Approximately 5,000 annually.
Is that the same?
Is that the same thing?
Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it should be a $5,000.
Okay. So, we're going to change 10 of 12, 4,000 to 5,000?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else see anything?
There was another word that was of instead of for, but I can't remember what it was, so I think we can figure it out.
Okay. Sounds good.
Very rare.
Yes.
A rare error on 12 comprehensive pages of minutes.
Yeah, right, that's a lot. All right. So, do we have a motion to approve as amended? Oh, Jared, go ahead.
It's, I'm trying to remember. I'm reading the first comment, public comment on page four. The individual that's listed here, sounds like they're speaking on behalf of the Budget Committee. I don't believe that that was accurate. I don't know if, just when I'm reading, it sounds like they're representing the Budget Committee, and I don't think that was an accurate statement. I think that was in their individual capacity. Maybe I'm just reading too much into it.
I thought she did say she was.
I know that that individual was not authorized to speak on behalf of the Budget Committee. And if that's what they said, then that's a different problem, not for us, though.
I thought that that was accurate.
Okay.
From what I remember.
If it is, it might be just my mind, but, okay.
Fair enough.
There's no urgency to approving minutes, so if.
If this accurate, well, the important thing is, this accurately reflects the comments, then it should be approved as is.
I think it was perceived that way by everybody.
No, she actually did.
She did not say, I'm budget, not speaking for budget. I thought she said she was on the budget, speaking for budget. Or alluded to that.
If it's accurate, it's accurate, and it should be approved as such.
But we'd have to watch it and listen to it again, which I know Denise does, over and over.
Yeah.
Does anybody else remember?
I, she said she was on the Budget Committee, but I remember her saying she's not, she's speaking as herself. But she is, she was saying that the Budget Committee members, I think what's written here is the same. It's what came before. And clearly, somebody's going to have to listen to the recording for the exact, the exact words.
Yeah, I didn't take it as, she didn't submit the comment, right? Because I, as I recall, she said, I'm a Budget Committee member, and I wanted to say, to remind that all Budget Committee members have an equal vote. So, I don't recall the words.
I'm speaking for myself.
I am speaking on my own behalf, however, nor did I hear, I am here for the Budget Committee.
Right.
And we had voted to say. So, I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear either of that.
Unless it was explicitly said, I don't have to read it.
Are we talking about that Olivia?
Yeah.
Would like to remind school board members that as we move, she would like to remind school board. Instead of Budget Committee members, it's she would like to remind. Is that what it was?
That's how I recall, but of course, you have much more.
That's what I thought, too.
Again, it's not wishful thinking. I prefer the minutes reflect what was actually done.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's the case.
I can look at it, I mean, I'll look at it tomorrow.
Are we good? Okay, we haven't moved this, so.
We haven't made a motion.
I just want to make sure that we're accurately reflecting things.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So, we can bring this back at the next meeting. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll do.
All right. Moving on, committee reports, finance. Scott and Dan?
Yeah. I would like to make a motion that we approve a total manifest value of $1,897,97,475.65.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. Okay, Dan, go ahead.
We have payroll taxes benefits of 1.6 million. We have four sped payments. One of them is for two individuals, that's Lighthouse School, 27,000 for two. Hillcrest Education, 14,7 for one. Emerges Health, 7,300 for one. And Safe Wheels LLC, 7,000. Now, general expenses, Amazon, seven grand for books, equipment, and supplies. Budget document tech, that's our copier service and managed print quarterly payment of 8,300. We bought some laptop batteries and chargers for some very old laptops, 13,600. Some propane from Dead River for 17,000. We, Goffstown Truck Center for the bus, Regular Ed, 110,000. Water from Goffstown Village, 8,700. And the student agenda books, we are paying for them, they've already been delivered, they're for freshman software and a few others for whoever in the upper class wants them. Those are school date books. And 12 grand for food.
All right, thanks, Dan. Anybody have questions, comments? All right, CNE, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? CNE, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Scott.
I was going to say, we did talk about switching over to using Roman numerals in light of the Latin honor thing.
We did.
But it got to such a serious conversation that we don't want to proceed with that anymore. The, I did want to, I'm passing around a revised revenue sheet, and I wanted to let you know, the last meeting, we talked about how the state is giving school districts less money for special ed aid. And for Goffstown, that less funding was 255,000. But I've seen that on the news, I've seen the newspaper, it's making its rounds. So, that's 255,000 less in revenue. Brian and I did receive information from the state with respect to FY '26 adequacy and FY '26 swept. So, the net result of that is that we're going to see an additional 154,000-ish in aid. So, we're seeing a decrease in swept of 133,000 and an increase of adequacy of a little over 286,000. So, that net is about 154,000, that we're going to get an increase. The unfortunate part of this is that it's not keeping up with what our expenses are. And I know, we'll probably talk about that a little bit later, but I wanted to give you that revised or that refreshed revenue sheet, because it does, as you'll see, it's not a whole lot more or less than what we got five years ago. So, whatever that, you know, is worth. So, a little bit more discussion there. In A and F, we talked about the CRF and our contribution towards that. And I think either at our December 2nd or 16th meeting, we'll talk about warrant articles. But just as a refresher, we do have that Mountain View Sistern project that we'd like to accomplish in the summer of FY '25, which is next summer. And the majority of that CRF deposit would go towards that particular project. And we did discuss night locks, but I know that's under the superintendent's report. And so, that's it for us. It was a pretty quick meeting.
Yeah, it was. Thank you, Scott. All right, Budget Committee. Jack?
Jack will go first.
All right.
Okay, I was at the first meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
Sorry, that's the one where our stipends were removed. They asked me if we would all get up and leave when our stipends got deleted. I said I didn't think, that was my feeling that I got from the people I served on the board with. Don't know if I advocated hard enough for that or not, but they cut it from the budget with the intent of putting it back in, which they never did. And then the only other thing that went, that they challenged, was the half position for administration. And that was defeated. But the removal of the stipends was, was one.
Eight, seven, one was the vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jack.
Is that an accurate count for that?
No, no.
Because 16 people. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It was 7, 6, 1.
7, 6, 1.
There was one person missing. I said I was going to abstain, and then I brought dishonor when I voted, because I thought I would be the vote to half it.
Right.
And I misconstrued hands.
Jack, you did fine.
Jack, yes.
You did. Some administrative items for Budget Committee. We have meetings this week. Jack is attending Fort Houston, I'm attending Thursday. They're starting to go through town. So, they'll be going through, I believe, the town administration on Tuesday, and I believe two others. Then they'll do the others on Thursday. So, we'll be representing and listening, they're just doing presentations, like what we did with the Budget Committee. There are no meetings for the week of Thanksgiving. There is a meeting on December 3rd, which is a Tuesday, and the meeting that was scheduled for December 5th has been canceled. So, that's been removed. So, just wanted to kind of give people an understanding. They are looking to do deliberations for town, starting on December 3rd, for anybody that's interested in going. The Thursday meeting was eventful. We did unfortunately have a cut that I think we tried to defend pretty darn well. They did cut our trip to Canterbury Lake, that was planned for the $8,700. And as Jack said, prime opportunity to put it back in the budget, take that 22,000 that cut from the meeting before, and make sure that our students had the opportunity to learn hands-on experience for physics. Unfortunately, that was removed. There was a lot of questions on the differentiation for, what is a super, I'm sorry, what does an assistant principal do? What does a dean of students do? What does a guidance counselor do? Kind of the roles responsibilities, if you will. A lot of board members at the Budget Committee didn't understand that. And that caused a lot of talking. So, there was some thought process of, maybe we need to do a better explanation of those roles, so that they clearly understand what they were. There were some other conversations about, hey, this line item went up in the default because we did transfer a lot of people from one school to another based on needs. Again, we have not increased headcount at all.
Yep.
For years. But we make sure that we reapply positions where they're needed. So, I think there was a takeaway that Scott had to look at the past year, where we did do those movements, so that we could explain that to the Budget Committee for their understanding. So, that was one of those takeaways. I know Scott had a list that he hopefully shared, that we'll be bringing back. We went through the entirety of Fund 10, which is the remaining schools. We did not talk about the food budget, food service. And there was also talk about the Sistern and CIP, which is going to be a conversation that needs to come up when we put that warrant article in place for the CRF. So, again, just kind of thinking ahead of what we might need to do. And I wanted to alert the board of that. I entertain any questions that might have happened to Jack or I, since Jack was there as well.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, Jared, because I wasn't able to be at the meeting, I was in New Boston at negotiations. What was the conversation around the Sistern? Did there, I know that, in general, deposits into the Capital Reserve Fund can be a contentious topic with the Budget Committee. But recognizing that we're trying to do this rather large, important life safety project for a school that was built in 1989, is there, does there appear to be, you know, recognition of the need to do the project? The cost of the project? You know, did they have alternatives of how to fund it? Did they want us to put $400,000 into the budget?
So, some members were always talking about revenue. I mean, that was a large conversation. My personal opinion, and let me get on my soapbox for a moment, there was a lot of conversation that had nothing to do with the Budget Committee's sphere of influence or scope of work.
Yeah.
Surprise. I tried to stay away from those conversations. I'd rather try to talk about what's present that we're actually talking about, the Sistern, CIP. We're not going to talk about that until the CRF really comes up. So, I tried to steer away from those conversations. But it's really about, do we really need this? Can't we just have a water truck that could go there if there was an emergency? You know, it's those types of conversations that were coming up. So, you know, again.
Certainly more to come, as you get into the other warrant article.
Exactly. I think, you know, I'm trying to limit to what we talk about, what's in front of us with our budget. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you.
I just have a clarifying question. I was at the meeting, but just in a member of the public capacity. Did Chairman Alexander say that he had hoped to, after he goes through the town budget, to look at the school and the town again, more holistically, as my recollection was?
Yeah, I did not make a motion to restrict reconsideration just because we didn't talk about the food service. So that is an open opportunity. And I know that other members, like Elizabeth Dupree, has talked about that as well, trying to look at things holistically after the fact. So there might be a conversation of total numbers and what that might sound to. And again, that's just my speculation at this point.
Because that would be different, that would be a deviation from what they've done in the last few years. It's, school stands with school. It's not a matter of, it's a matter of, is this necessary? Have we done the oversight correct?
Lauren, being a former member of the Budget Committee, she knows that, you know, I tried to restrict reconsideration all the time once we go through things. I tried to do it after every school when I first started it. But I know that that wasn't going to pass, so I didn't try to do it this time.
Right.
It was less a challenge and just more of, my recollection of, is that, that's still the intent, is this might come back up to say, well, now that you have saved some money, okay, we might be able to get, like, the high school trip back up.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jack.
And I think the other big thing that was beat around was the lack of being able to determine. They thought there was many layers with the dean of students, RBTs, and social emotional learning teacher, and how those three roles specifically were different in the way that they interacted with the kids. And I was over there raising my hand when I didn't get called.
And I was sitting at home giving all the answers.
Yeah, Ginny was sending me texts, letting me know what was given in the schools.
My husband left the room.
So I think that definition, even though I think it was given pretty well, and I think I could define it fairly well, was definitely not within the, was not easily defined by the Budget Committee.
Okay. Good to know.
So Brian would have been the man for that.
Right. Scott, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a couple of things in terms of dates. So we're meeting on December 2nd, which is the first Monday after the Thanksgiving, long Thanksgiving weekend. And presuming that we're meeting on that night, the CRF deposit would need to be an agenda item so that this board can take an official vote on that. Because then, that would then go to the Budget Committee so that they could take action on those meetings that happen in December. And then hoping that the Budget Committee, or asking that the Budget Committee determine what their school district budget is, it then comes back to this board on December 16th, which is your final meeting of the 2024 calendar year, which you will have your default budget to sign off on. But also, will you or won't you agree with the Budget Committee budget going into a public hearing? That public hearing, I think, Jared, is somewhere around January 9th-ish, or right around that week. So yes, there'll be a school board meeting in early January. But I say all these dates because typically we've been done by Thanksgiving, and then we're, you've made a motion to go to public hearing, and we're working on PowerPoints so that the public, that the, I'm sorry, the Budget Committee then can present in early January. Things are now getting very extended, and I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to have a meeting when they're scheduled and vote on things. So December 2nd, CRF deposit, December 16, default budget, and hopefully either concurrence or not with the Budget Committee's budget on December 16th. This way, we have time to deal with that.
Go ahead, Dan.
We are not obligated to concur or not concur on December 16th until after the...
Public hearings.
After the public hearing.
Right, right.
You know, we can go ahead and say, you know, that number that they gave isn't so good, but we can talk about that at the public hearing.
Yes. I think in the past, I think there was concurrence, and I think it was stated at the public hearing that this was a budget that was agreed.
Right. If it's concurrence, I think it gives them a better public hearing, knowing there wouldn't necessarily be a lot of us talking other numbers.
Yeah.
But it's not required.
Yeah, I, if I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Just my observation from the two meetings, and it's funny, because I guess everybody has different perspectives, right? So I thought that there were really good discussions. And yes, they did go off the reservation on a few things here and there, but I thought that it was very good civil discussions. I think that whenever people are making motions to cut or add to a budget, obviously there are agreements and disagreements, but I thought everybody was cordial and nice about it. And that they were, you know, from my perspective, it was healthy debate, and I'm sure people on, maybe they were on different sides of it, might not have felt that way, but I thought that the group was overall kind to each other and had good debate. With respect to, they discussed a lot about revenues, which they typically don't talk about, but it does impact budgets, you know? They talked about, you know, the town and how they can have different tax base. I mean, it's the typical stuff, but it was good thing for the community to hear that the Budget Committee is concerned about that. So that's it. For me, my concern is making sure that we hit all these deadlines, both statutorily and so that we don't have to call special meetings.
Right.
That's all.
Okay. All right, did you have your hand up? Oh, okay. All right, so we're good with budget stuff for now?
Yep, for now.
Okay. All right, moving on, C and E, Ginny.
Our next meeting is December 9th at 7:00 PM at Central, at the SAU office.
All right, thank you. P and C, Rheta.
Yes, P and C met this evening, and we, as you know, we, our previous chair resigned, so I was nominated and elected to be the chair through March. And we rehashed a lot of things. Well, actually, I should say first, Cornerstone and Dreamkeeper Awards, for everybody here in the public. We, the nomination forms are available on the website, went out to all the school social media, so we're looking for nominations of people. In general, it's an award for somebody that is in the school or works within the school, and then we look at organizations and people outside of the school. So those are the two awards. So we appreciate all the nominations we've gotten over the years. We also, so the deadline is noon on December 2nd, and the committee will be looking at the nominations and bringing those forward to the full board for consideration. We revisited some topics that we had brought up. It actually, it had come up during the retreat and also earlier in the fall. And we'd like to just bring this back to the board to get some, maybe some guidance on what our priorities are. And starting with the three things, we had talked about having it, not so much a video, but having it just a graphic with the top three things, and we, the board, would elect those three things at the end of the meeting. And if this is something we want to pursue, we'd do that starting tonight. So that was one thing. The other one was creating videos on topics, either videos or handouts on topics, to help the public better understand what the board does. We talked about doing one, how the budget is, how we make the budget, how public comment works, and the board's role. We have our regular budget videos that are being put out by, typically Brian and Scott will work on those. But those are the three items we're talking about, and we're not sure, you know, where to put our energy because we don't necessarily have the staff. So I don't, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts or input on those items, but it would help us to focus our time and energy. So.
Okay. You did a lot tonight. So we'll talk about, well, we had, wanted to do the top three things at one of the last meetings.
Yeah.
So we can figure out top three at the end, and then who's going to do the graph? Is that something that would come out this week?
We're hoping, we'd be looking to create a template so it's easier to be able to just fill in and get this posted within, you know, one to three days after the meeting.
And you're ready to do that if we did, like, did the top three to do that this week?
Right.
You guys are ready? Okay. All right. Is everybody good with that?
And in regard to the videos and the other projects?
Yeah.
I'm not so sure we have the creative capacity. We could make something like this happen, but we're looking for, you know, bringing it back to the board. Is this something you really feel strongly that we need to move forward on it, or can it be, can it just be something we'd like to do someday?
What was the thought?
Like to do someday sounds okay.
Yeah.
I know, Rheta, you and the committee is very busy on a lot of things.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ginny.
I think whenever we can get information out to the public, it's awesome, though.
Yeah.
And important.
Right.
So I don't know if any of the other board members want to add to that.
Yeah. I obviously am in favor of it getting done. I, it's the difference between the videos, I guess, and just the raw text of a handout of what, you know, because sort of the information is out there, but sort of it's not that easy to find in what's going to grab people's attention. You know, even if we define something in text, is it worth, you know, seeking out GTV to give us a hand and put together something? Where different people speak of, like, you know, this is how the budget gets presented to us, we pass it along to the Budget Committee. And, you know, our role as a school board isn't, you know, micromanaging what teachers are saying in the classroom. It's, you know, broad policy and hiring and financial statements, you know? And where does that, what's going to give us the biggest bang for our buck? I think we all agree here that communication is something that needs to be done, and anything we can put out to the public is a benefit to them and to us. But what are the thoughts on how and where?
Right.
Or revelatory idea?
Yeah. And, you know, so I think, yeah, go ahead.
I like, I like just doing a statement of the three things, and I think that some people are good about reading things, and some people prefer to watch them, and so, and I don't know how hard this is, but if you did, like, if we chose tonight to do the Latin honors, the CPR, and I don't know, one other thing. And if you wrote about them and then indicated where in the video you can find it with the link, like, there's both without cutting and doing something specific and doing something in addition to. So I think that that can be a little bit of a compromise there. I do like the idea of focusing on public comment. I think that people are sometimes, like, you know, I feel so passionate about something that has occurred, or, and they're looking for a back and forth and not realizing they're not going to get there. And like, what is the purpose of a public comment? What can you do prior to doing public comment? Which I would love to see more of. I think that's the communication piece around, like, you know, collaborate with the school, with the people within, with the teacher, with the dean, you know, with the principal. Understand the difference in the roles and who to go to to talk, and like, finding out that you can be heard at that level, and it doesn't have to be about skipping all of that and coming right here. And I think it builds a better partnership between the families and the schools. So I think that maybe doing something like that in the future, it doesn't have to be now, that, I think that is a good goal. I like what we did last year for, during the deliberative. I think that Jared did a great job with the presentation, and I think really laid the foundation very well. I don't remember what we had done, though. Didn't we do some sort of, not like explanation last year via video, but I thought we did a little something more.
Mr. Gross doing his gross out on GTV.
Oh.
Talking about it.
That's what it was.
It's not gross out, it's, that's gross. Right, Scott?
I thought that was good, and I liked, I think we did lay a good foundation for individuals, and I think at a level that helps a lot more people understand where it's not so foreign to them. And so I think that we gain more involvement that way. And I would be okay doing something very similar this year. I think if we started with, like, how a budget is created, our budget is done, we're really moving on. And I think that that, again, is like, think about what we want to do early on next year if we're looking for more participation through that process. But really good ideas.
Yeah. Great.
A lot of work. Go ahead, Jack.
And I think what, you started with the three things to know, I think, is exactly the path that we were, talked about. And then I think it was more about the other informational pieces when I was speaking.
And we do have an annual work plan, so we could plan out for next year where we would do the other pieces. Great. Thank you. I know I've taken a little bit more time.
No, that's fine. It's a lot, and I know you've been trying to get things going.
Right.
So, Scott, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, you know, as, you know, some of us around this table read what's on social media, and others have a more healthy lifestyle and don't. But, you know, for me, what I see as critically important is somehow, and I don't know how it happens, but there has to be individuals who will put factual information out on social media. So, you know, and I shared this with Brian, you know, today, is that it bothered me, and there's, you know, there's a lot of things going on. People got their tax bills, right? And the tax bills went up a lot, and we did tell people that they were going to go up a lot. And it was for a whole slew of reasons. And, you know, we talked a little about that just today with the revenue piece. But the fact of the matter is, I did not see one single post that said that Goffstown has, and it's not something to brag about, but the lowest cost per pupil of any school district in New Hampshire that has elementary, middle, and high school. So if I missed yours, I apologize. I hide you from all comments.
I put it on a few times. Just wanted to say.
But the, I don't know how we could be, you know, talked about as being frivolous with spending as a district when we have the lowest cost per pupil in the state. And it's not that there's no room for improvement, because everybody can approve, but I think we're managing it, you know, pretty well. And, you know, so for me, if I was to think about doing a show, I would just, like, bring on the questions, you know? Obviously, I'm in a unique position because I know we're all, I know where the dollars are, but I just think there's a lot of opportunities to set the record straight because not everything, actually, I might have been, there are things that were just inaccurate, you know, on these posts. And then people believe it to be true, and then they talk about it at the supermarket or at church or other things, and that becomes the truth when it's really not the truth. And I've also seen instances where somebody does go online, set the record straight, and then the conversation kind of fizzles out. So it becomes a feeding frenzy for a while. So this is not like it was, you know, I was on the board a long, long time ago when they had a thing called a newspaper, and you can write letters to the paper, and there was a reporter, and there's none of that anymore. So I do get concerned about, you know, how the district is portrayed in the community when I read things that just aren't accurate. And somehow, we have to figure out a way that, whether it's an official response from the school district on these social media posts, and maybe that's a way, but got to figure out a way to set that record straight. Because in the absence of that, there's a lot of wrong information that's being spread.
Absolutely. Thank you, Scott.
So I say that as both your BA, but also I'm a resident here too, and I want things to be portrayed accurately. I mean, we got Jared and Jack working their tails off on Budget Committee meetings and defending budgets for a reason, because they are good budgets.
All right, so you're all set, Rheta?
All set. Our next meeting is December 2nd at 6:00.
Okay, sounds good. All right, policy review. We met last week. We'll have some first reads and second reads later. Our next meeting is December 9th at 5:30 at the SAU. And then the SAU Budget Hearing Board Meeting is December 11th at 6:00 at the SAU. So if that's not a good day for you guys, just let Denise know as soon as possible. And Technology Committee, Dan.
Technology Committee met last week, Wednesday at 4:00 in the afternoon. We said we'd meet for an hour and a half, and I think Jack made a motion to adjourn at 5:29. So we made it. We talked about some of the important stuff in public or websites, because there are a bunch of websites that teachers and kids can use. They got to be vetted. You heard tonight, we're, a data privacy agreement could not be signed for the CPR. We have signed, have some, but there's a company that we work with who does it for a whole bunch of school districts in New York, so they just jumped in on it. So it's making it a little longer to vet through, but they have more stuff, so basically we're keeping all the information secure. And it's, some have expired, but we maintain it for the school year so that we don't interrupt learning. Some are, could expire, but if they don't reach the terms, they just haven't signed a new one, that's okay. But they could be also in an active negotiation, and we still let them use it during that active negotiation. We then did a technology updates on some of the things that we got to do. Then we went into non-public and talked about data security and privacy.
Nice.
Which we can't talk about here.
Awesome. And your next meeting?
Will be on January...
8th.
8th at 4:00 in the afternoon. That's a Wednesday.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
All right, Superintendent's Report, Brian.
Thank you. So Mr. Gross mentioned the FY '26 adequacy amounts were announced last week. So in total, we're looking at an increase of about 155,000. However, that really doesn't tell the whole story. And I'm not sure tonight is the night, Scott, at 8:30, that we want to kind of go into this in greater detail, but there's a lot to tell in this story.
I think we give a little, a teaser.
Please, please.
And then the rest goes on, you're gross.
I'm the gross.
So I think, and I explained this to A&amp;F just briefly, but really what the story is, is that, and when you look at that revenue sheet, you will have data from '21, '22, all the way to projected '25, '26. And... And when you look at that data, you're going to, if you were to add up the columns for state adequacy aid and SWEPT, what you're going to see is that the funding from the state via SWEPT and New Hampshire Adequacy over that five-year period went up less than 1%, .56, all right? What you're going to see is that our total appropriation during that same period, that same five-year period, went up 20%, okay? So appropriation went up 20%. State aid to our, to Goffstown went up half of a percent. I think that tells a pretty compelling story. The US inflation rate during that same period of time, 19.5%. So our appropriations and the US inflation rate roughly the same. The big, big story here is that the state funding via adequacy and SWEPT only went up one-half of 1%. And who pays the difference? That's a trivia question. Anyone? 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 You? And you?
They do. They pay it.
We all. We're all paying that. So I would argue that we all pay for it if you had other sources, whether, if you had an income tax, a sales tax, you're all, you'd be paying for it, but it wouldn't all be coming from the property tax bucket. So I see all these posts on social media, and by the way, this is not a, just a Goffstown thing, it's a New Boston thing, it's a Milford thing, it's a Portsmouth, it's an everywhere thing. So if you take a look at SWEPT alone, that's the statewide property tax that is raised locally and distributed locally, that actually went down 7% from 2021 to 2022. Back in 2021, '22, you could look on your revenue sheet, 3 million, 364,0276, and projected next year, 3 million, 125,0354. So I think that's really the challenge for, you know, for folks is that we have many people in our community that are on a fixed income or they simply can't afford their homes and because of the property taxes, that is a reality, we can't, we can't duck that. But I also wanted to point out that, you know, our spending is not out of line and the major metric for that is, you know, what are, you know, what are we spending on a cost-per-pupil basis and it's the lowest in the state. When you look at other spending metrics, we are also spending, you know, in the lower end of things. We heard from the Budget Committee, we have too many administrators. Well, that is not what the data shows us. So the data is showing us that we're, that we're under the state average for administrative expenses. And I also believe that the management, the overall management and success of the school district is based upon quality management, quality teachers, quality staff at all levels and making sure that everyone is kind of doing their job. But the big story here is that inflation and our appropriations are very similar. It's, you know, I hate to say it, but we all know this, that the state aid portion is a, a pretty big component. I shared this at the Budget Committee meeting. Last year, there was a bill that would have given Goffstown 1.1 million dollars more of state aid. I believe all of our state reps voted for that. It failed in the Senate and it did not happen. We also saw a decrease of special ed aid of about $255,000. That 1.35 million dollars would have put a pretty big dent in our FY23 budget. Might have had a very tiny increase in our property taxes. So I think, you know, the message is, is that, like, this is an issue in every town and there is a reason why there have been four lawsuits over the last 20-some-odd or 30 years because it's not, it, the system is messed up. And I was pleased to hear good dialogue at the Budget Committee meeting. I think we have to work together on this one, you know, the left and the right politically and figure out ways. We can't stop, got to stop barking at each other and, you know, I'm a person who I think was in the middle and I, I think we got to work together as a team and figure this thing out because it's not going to get any better. I want to see people stay in this community and not get taxed out. But, and that requires prudent spending and I think with a, what's our budget? Less than 300,000 more than, than their fault? I think we did that. So Brian, I don't know if there's anything else?
Yeah, the only thing I would, I just really appreciate, thank you for the detail. Scott has, if anyone's ever interested, he's got a spreadsheet going back to, was it 98?
Oh, my own. Yeah, I got my own, I have my own taxes right here.
He's got his own spreadsheet that goes back and tracks his own taxes, what percent went to the town, what percent went to the school, how it's changed over the years.
And this one glaring thing, and I should, I should point that out, when the statewide property tax was implemented in the year 2000, 60% of the spend, of the revenues for the school taxes came from the local school tax rate and 40% came from the statewide property tax. Right now, as of today, as I just did my, put my, I just input my own bill in, it's 90-10. And I, so I'll just tell you, back in 2000, the statewide property tax that I paid was $956.58 and now the statewide property tax portion, $621, it's reduced. So over the course of 20-some-odd years, it's 35% less than it was 20, 24 years ago. It's crazy.
I think the thing that I really appreciate is, I have been beating this drum for a couple of decades of my life and I really appreciate that there are a lot more people that are sounding the alarm. This is a broken system. Public education is the state's responsibility. It's the state's responsibility to define, cost out, and pay for an adequate education and we continue to not see that. And I want to, I want to see the outrage. Why isn't somebody fixing this? How many decades have I been complaining about this? It's painful. Anyhow, I'm, I'm breathing, I'm trying to work on my, my own mental health around this topic. We also received notification last week that the Education Freedom Accounts Phase-Out Grant is being ended, Scott. That was about a, was it 3,000, I think I, I saw?
A little more.
Okay.
Yeah. Not a ton. I think I put that on the revenue sheet, too.
So that's another one that we received notification on. This was a grant that we received over a couple of years for students that leave public schools and go to Education Freedom Accounts. The state gave this EFA free, Phase-Out money to all state.
Yeah, we got 19,696 and that was a little more than the 10,000 from the year before, so.
Gotcha. Continuing this topic, two school funding lawsuits are heading to the New Hampshire Supreme Court. Everyone's probably very familiar with the convale lawsuit. That essentially is making the case that if you take the minimum standards and look at the required, things that schools are required to do, there's a cost associated with that. The judge made a ruling that it was around $9,000. That change is about a $500 million change in what the state would be responsible for, for providing adequacy. So we'll have to wait and see what, what happens there. But the other one I want you to be aware of is there's also a lawsuit that's going on around SWEPT. And there are 27 communities that have historically been able to keep the amount. So the way that SWEPT works is districts have, if you're a so-called donor town, that's a phrase that you might remember from the Clermont 1 and Clermont 2 lawsuits, if you're a so-called donor town, those towns have been able to keep that money that they raise locally underswept, even if they exceed what the state required them to take. And what the ruling is saying is that those towns need to give that to the state so it can pay for other, that's, that's the second lawsuit. So that one is expected to be ruled on prior to convale because that will have implications beyond convale. And also, another side part of SWEPT is there are certain parts of the state, including unincorporated places, that are removed from the calculation. And so that would include things like where the balsams is located. So some of those communities, the ruling also said that incorporated places should be part of the calculation for SWEPT. So I, I just raised this so that we're all paying attention to both of those lawsuits as they go through the Supreme Court. We'll keep an eye on that. I wanted to let the board know that I met with Chief Serino last week and discussed the ongoing concerns we have with hiring and SRO for Mountain View Middle School. Mrs. Kohler came in and spent some time with the chief as well. So he continues to struggle with hiring. He has hired three new officers that he expects to be road-ready in the fall. So that's a long time. By the time they go through academy, they do all the training, they do all the required hours. So my, my concern that I shared with the chief is I'm looking for staffing for the DARE program and continuing the DARE program. And we have, again, continued to ask for, if we're able to have an SRO at Mountain View, that's a struggle for the chief, but we've continued to explore some other staffing options. So I wanted the board to know that we have continued to have the conversation with the police department. And again, we continue to be so grateful for the partnership with both police and fire. They're great resources and supports for us. We received notification this week that Bartlett was identified as what's called a TCI school and that stands for Targeted Support and Interventions. I'm going to send a little handout around for the board while I talk about this. And I, the reason this wasn't part of your packets is we just received notification today that the school list was being released publicly. So up until this afternoon, we were told to keep this data embargoed and we weren't able to share it. The state just let us know this afternoon that we were cleared to release this. So the packet that's going around to you is going to, I'm just giving this so you can hear a little bit about this. So the introduction is, we've been identified as a TCI, TSI school, that's targeted support and improvement needed. And we're identified as a school with a subgroup and the lowest performing 5% of all schools for that subgroup for two consecutive years. Subgroups include English language learners, economically disadvantaged, racial and ethnic groups, and students with disabilities. So there are four categories. There's a meeting that's coming up this Thursday that Mrs. Kohler will be participating along with Mrs. Pischka, but the information that I received was that we were identified for the subgroup of white students. So I don't have a lot of information about this. We're going to learn more. We're going to go to that meeting on Thursday, but the preliminary notification that I received, that was the designation, was for the subgroup of white students. So more to come on that. Did you take that, Tom?
Yeah.
It wasn't the whole packet?
No.
That's the whole packet. You can, here, take this. So I just gave that to you for a little bit of information and Mrs. Kohler and Mrs. Pischka will come back and we'll learn more about that, but I just wanted you to know that Bartlett has been identified through that process. And lastly, they held an event this past week at Goffstown High School for I Am College Bound where it's free for high school students to sign up and to apply for colleges. I didn't get the final number. I don't know, Mrs. Bean, if you heard what the number was, or Brady. I'll see if I can get that, but I know that Mrs. Mizony and all the counselors did a big event. They had kids, they welcomed it. It was kind of like a carnival atmosphere. They, they really created a lot of energy and enthusiasm. And what a great way for kids to apply to college for free.
Yeah.
So instead of paying $40 or $50 or $100 for that application free fee, it was nothing. So that's the day to do it. So I'm really glad that kids applied and, and I'd be happy to stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, old business. So we have two policies to come back tonight for second read. It's the student board member and the teacher board members to have a non-binding vote. We had first reads, we already talked about questions and answers, so tonight would be if somebody is willing to make a motion and we can vote on whether to move them forward or not. So we can start with BBBF, that's the student board member.
I would make a recommendation to...
A motion?
Accept BBBH as, as given.
You're making a motion?
Yes.
To approve it?
To approve it.
Do I have a motion by Janie? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Did you get all that?
Hmm.
Oh. Did you get that, Denise? Okay. All right, so Caroline seconded. All right, any further discussion? Go ahead.
It was too long. I didn't hear which one we're doing.
BBBH.
F. We're doing BBBH.
Sorry.
That's what I thought I heard.
She said H?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's what I had first in my package.
Oh, I had the other one first. I thought that's what I said. So you, so...
Which one does Mrs. Moore, Matt?
I know. Which one do you have?
BBBH?
F.
F.
You have F first, okay.
All right.
So we have F that we're going to talk about first.
I think the motion about F, then.
Okay. All right, so she amended it to F, which Denise already had. And Caroline, you were good with that?
Yes.
And any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passed. And then the next one is BBBH, that's the teacher. So I need a motion for that.
Motion to approve BBBH as presented.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Lauren. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is, oh, go ahead, Rheta.
Just a quick question and it actually applies to both. Once we vote on these, when do they take effect?
Right now.
Immediately.
Immediately. The next meeting.
If they pass.
Thanks, Rheta. Anything else? All right, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have one opposition and abstaining. All right, so we have one, no.
Just as FYI, I voted no on both of them.
You voted no? Oh, I didn't see your hand on, okay. Did you get that, Denise? You had no for both. Thank you, Jen. I didn't see your hand up. Glad you said that. It's still motion passed.
And how does the chair recognize whether the first one we passed is going to be recorded in the minutes and not the step, headbutt or what?
Say that again?
You want to be more specific? Brady had the opportunity now to vote on that particular motion.
Oh, yes, for the teachers.
And I didn't see his hand or your eyes connect to find out if anything's going to happen.
Right, well, this is a brand-new policy that...
How are we going to make that work now?
Yeah, so...
And if I can just add, I'm not going to speak for the teachers, but for Brady. And I don't think Brady McCann needs me to protect him in any way, shape, or form, but Brady, you just, you don't have to vote if you don't want to. It's optional, it's up to you. If you choose to either vote yes, vote no, or abstain, it's your choice to do that.
Right.
So I would agree, Mr. Cludier, when, when...
Some signal.
Yeah, I'm going to have to be watching you.
It'll be up to Brady, but Brady, you don't have to vote if you don't want to.
Right. So I may have to ask what your position is.
But you'll always welcome.
Yeah. And we can start this at the next coordinating. Teachers is the same.
Or...
Technically, it's, it's effective right now.
Yep.
Yes, it is. So they could continue on. That's true.
You vote that teachers can or can't?
You don't have to.
Oh, we can?
You can.
And so I, I think maybe less forcefully, I would say to the teachers, it's your discretion if you choose to vote.
Right.
It's your decision.
All right.
Can you repeat that vote, please?
For which one?
One against.
So, one against, which is Jared?
So eight-one, or seven-one.
Seven-one.
Did you say anything about someone else abstaining?
No.
Okay.
I asked if anybody was abstaining.
Oh, all right.
So both, both votes were seven-one.
Yeah. Okay. All right, moving on to new business. GHS Performing Arts request.
Mr. Gross just stepped out. This is a Mr. Gross request.
Oh.
I believe what Mr. Gross is going to be asking about is a vendor service for aerial acrobatics. I'm winging it a little bit. I believe this is the Flying by Foy.
Do we want to wait for the comeback?
Why don't we wait till Scott comes back? Because that's what I believe this is. But this is a Scott thing.
Yes, the GBB and GBBR being replaced with BBBH.
Right.
Yes. Can you make permission to delete?
Yes, we can have a motion to delete those. All right, so with the teacher board, it used to be GBB and GBBR, which we're taking out and replacing it.
Make a motion to remove and delete GBB and GBB.
All right, Dan made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Rheta. All right, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And you guys are in the three or not.
No votes.
No votes.
Well, we don't record any?
We just say, yeah. Yeah.
Absence.
Absence. Yeah, okay.
It's going to be fun.
We'll get it. All right.
That's why it took so long at subcommittee.
Yes, it did. All right, so we're going to put off performing arts until Scott comes back. So there is first-read policies. There's three of them for you guys to read through. We'll bring them back at the next meeting for questions. Go ahead.
As I read through these, I didn't see a single change. Not a comma, not a period, not a space.
Yeah, we --
These are just identical to what they were before.
A lot of them were updated. Well, we have the new policy, JLDBA. That was the new policy.
That is important to know.
And some of -- and these were required by law. You were at the meeting, weren't you?
No, this was the last meeting. I missed that one. Rheta was there.
Oh, that's right, Rheta was there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking.
So, yeah, they -- we actually --
Oh, it said new policy.
Yeah, so --
I didn't read the paper copy.
What we ended up doing is using the New Hampshire School Board's Association policies.
Okay.
Correct? Yeah. They were more -- there was more information. It was more clear than our policy with these, with the two. And then the JLDBA, Behavioral Management Intervention, is required by law. That's a new policy.
That had some new components, and I think there were pieces that were missing from JFAPD.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're all required by law.
Thank you. I would maybe extend my superintendent's report a little bit and let you know that while we've been sitting here and why Mr. Gross was out of the room was we had a pipe burst here at the high school.
Oh, dear.
So I've gotten a couple of text messages and some photos. So I think Scott went to go down and see what it was. So I haven't been down there. What's the quick version?
Essentially, a pipe burst in one of the classrooms in the 100th Wing, impacted three classrooms. It stopped at the guidance entrance. But it was not a burst pipe because the temperatures are not cold. But it was just a wear and tear. And it wasn't like a drip, drip. Now, this was like a --
Gush.
Gush. So fire department is on scene. They shut off a couple of zones and --
Better now than 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah. And our custodial crew, they called in some additional people. And between them and the fire department, they are sucking up the water.
Thank you, Scott.
When those pipes go, they go. I remember I was a pretty new teacher. And I came in on a school vacation and I had my daughter with me. She was maybe four. And we were in my classroom and she was like, "Mommy, what's that noise? What's that noise?" And I said, "Someone's rolling a cart down the hallway. No big deal." And then I went, "Mm-mm, there's no people in the school." So I opened the door and a pipe had burst. And it was just coming down and down and down.
Yeah.
And here I was, a new teacher. I'd never reached out to people.
Thank God it was first.
But I had the principal's emergency phone number. So I called him.
Oh, my goodness.
And I was like, "We have a pipe pouring water into the 300th Wing? And I don't know what to do." And he was like, "I'm on it." But like, that could have been a real mess on a school vacation.
Yeah.
I just happened to be lucky to be there.
To be here.
Yeah.
All right, Scott, so we have the GHS Performing Arts request.
Oh.
We put that off to get back.
Yeah, thanks. So I did receive a request from the high school. Every, I don't know, it's every five or six years, they do a production, which is a little bit more in-depth in terms of the staging or the rigging that might be required. So they want to do a production that will involve rigging, which would have the performers suspended across the stage. And it's called, there's a group called Foy that does that. And it could be up to a $10,000 cost in which to do it. What they're asking for is the ability to keep the gate, which essentially is a loss of revenue for the district of about that same $10,000. So the, long story short on this one, it's about a $10,000 cost. And they're looking to keep the gate receipts from a couple of the events from this year to pay for, essentially.
Alternatively, Scott, could the board authorize us to just use?
Spend money to do it. And it would be next year. It would be a next year. I think it's a next year thing. I have to check my email. I wasn't -- I got a little distracted with the water thing. So just bear with me a second.
I figured they gave you a mop and you'd get it cleaned up.
They tried. They did. They tried, but hold on one second. Let me see.
So Scott, this is a request for next year, though? This is, you mean next school year? You don't mean next --
Next school year is when I think they're going to do it.
Okay, so this is not associated with Phantom?
No, but they, I think they wanted to use receipts from this year's Nutcracker, et cetera, to fund, to put into their student accounts to do it. So let me just get it. They don't want to get this wrong.
Because Phantom did have some flying features.
And it had the chandelier and, yeah, I remember. It's a pretty ambitious production if no one's --
It is.
If you've never seen the Phantom of the Opera, it's a lot to take in.
Yeah.
And the high school production that they did, was it 10, 12 years ago? It was spectacular.
Yeah.
It was really successful.
Yeah, so, in fact, I'll just read to you. They're looking to keep the gate from the 2024 Nutcracker and 2025 February and July musicals up to the anticipated cost for contracting with Flying by Foy, which would be in February 2026. And last time they used it was about a $10,000 cost. So their specific request was, again, we typically generate the revenue from that as a district. And then, you know, it's used to offset, you know, the tax rate in this case. So there's two ways of doing that. Yes, you know, give them permission to do so or consideration next year for expending this type of funds for that endeavor.
Didn't we, Scott, on your request, move expenditures into the budget? Because we then moved the revenue --
Yes.
-- into the budget?
Yep.
So what we're doing is saying, okay, we moved the expense now.
Yep.
Let's get rid of the revenue.
Yes.
And let them, that's what the request is.
That's what the request is.
Or the request is to increase the expenditure.
Right. One or the other.
Well, that's not what he requested. That's what you were trying to get him to request.
That's, that's --
He didn't pick up on it.
That is what is being requested of us.
Yes, I get it.
Okay.
That is, doesn't sit well with me. That methodology doesn't sit well with me at all. It's bait and switch. That's what that's called. And it's not, it's not appropriate, but...
Do you have a solution? Do you have a solution if that's not appropriate?
In, well, the solution would be what Brian is asking. You go right out and say, "They want more expense to do this other production." That's clearer for what we want to do. That would be the appropriate request of this board. At the moment, I'm not in favor of that request, but that's because we're in a default budget. And I don't know what's going to happen next year. So it's, can't we do another production that's not going to cost that much more? That's, you know, I, we're in a default budget.
I appreciate that they're thinking about this and looking out ahead.
Yes.
So as they're thinking about their winter musical next school year, I appreciate that they've recognized that the production has increased costs. So I would think the short version, and I have not had an in-depth conversation with Mrs. McCann about this, but I would imagine if the board was not in favor of the additional expenditures for Flying by Foy, we would likely look at a different production. So I don't know which production they're looking at. But if it involves Flying by Foy, and if the money's not available for that contracted service, then I would think that they're looking at another production. Or you're on the ground. You still do the production, but nobody's being suspended by equipment.
So we can get more information?
I will relay that to Goffstown High School? Yep.
And Scott, alternatively, we could have budgeted for this in the high school. So there could have, right?
That's, yes, but, I mean, if a physics field trip is not going to -- I wouldn't even say field trip. If a physics curriculum trip, I don't really consider, you made a great point, I mean, at the last meeting.
It was.
If that did not fly, then I doubt that, no pun intended.
Yeah, Foy's not going to fly.
And I can't believe I said that. Sounds like Fred Pleit.
So more information for the next meeting?
Yeah, and then the other spoiler alert is that in the policy committee, there is a sponsorship slash advertising that is in the pipeline. So there could be other ways of getting funding for things like this.
Go ahead, Jenny.
And I just want to make the comment to anybody listening, if anybody would like to donate in the community that has an extra couple of dollars to things like the physics trip, that, how many times do you hear kids say, "Why do I have to learn math? When am I ever going to use it again?"
Perfect example of when.
And our students are advanced and can do an amazing play. But then it's like money keeps them back from able to do things. So if anybody in the community, you know, just wants to help out the kids, that would be wonderful. Just throwing it out there.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, so this is going to come back with more information.
Potential, yeah.
Okay.
Let me relay it to the high school.
All right, so are we all good to move on?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so staffing, very short staffing.
Yeah, so on the staffing sheet for your approval this evening, we have one, two, three, four, five sports nominations for boys' basketball, A Team, B Team, girls', A Team, wrestling and cheer. And as wrestling, as we're mentioning, former school board student reps. Jack St. Jean was one of our student reps. He's now one of our wrestling coaches. So thank you to Jack.
That's awesome.
Yeah, great kid.
All right, so I'll need a motion to approve the co-curricula. Go ahead, Jack.
I'll make a motion to approve the co-curricula as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Rheta. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And Mr. Davis did say yes.
I tried to get my hand up there.
I did see his hand up. I like the hand up. I appreciate that, Mr. Davis.
I have the numbers for you. 117 students applied for the college applications.
Oh, great.
And 250 applications were, 117 kids came down and they applied for 250 different applications.
Nice. Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Bean.
Yeah, that's great.
All right. Yeah, so the top three things.
I would say the, oh, can we just --
No, 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 yeah.
Okay, my recommendation is the information about Latin honors, the information about CPR.
About the what?
CPR. And if we can provide some information, and I don't know if this is appropriate, about the revenue stuff that Scott presented in a, you know, condensed way.
Yes. Does that work for everybody?
Sorry, what was the third thing?
The revenue information in a condensed way, she said.
So Scott, that sounds like a you think, Scott.
I know. She heard you. So this is what I was saying, like, it's really hard to explain something like this in a 128 characters.
Right. Yeah.
Doable, but...
Go ahead, Dan.
There are two policies that passed this evening that took months and months and months. And it's still not over because we're still talking about that.
Wow, top four things.
Maybe important.
Maybe the third thing instead of the revenue?
I don't know, just a suggestion.
What's everybody's thought?
I'm okay with the new policies.
This might be the longest discussion we have tonight.
Yeah.
I was actually thinking of both the CPR and the honors together as presentations from --
Okay.
Oh, that could be one, instead of one and two.
And then --
Ooh, look at that.
Two and the --
She's a combo.
And then the new policies for the students in winter.
Two new policies, that and...
Is there a way of doing a small thing on revenue?
We're going to be pointing them to the recording.
Oh.
So --
I don't, I was at the, I'll talk to Brian about this tomorrow.
Okay.
You're talking about the budget meeting? I mean, the warrant article video?
No.
No, the revenue, the discussion around revenue.
Oh, this video? The video from this meeting?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Is there anything else for the third?
I thought we were talking about budget videos.
No. The only other thing I can think of is just a conversation we just had about putting some additional visibility on a production that wants to be done next year.
There you go.
I think that that's something that you should probably be directing people to say, "Hey, this is something our students want to do."
Yeah.
Let's see if we can get some donations in place to help out. I think that that would be a great thing to put on a three things.
Yeah, okay.
So we're up to four now.
No, we're going to take revenue off.
Revenue off, okay.
And do the production, the honors with the CPR, and then the two new policies.
So just in terms of clarification, because this is a new process for the board, Rheta, we will make a graphic. So I'll ask some of our staff to make like a one-page graphic. And then how do we want to go from there? Do you want to send?
Do, are you going to, do I fill in the details? A summary, a brief summary? So will you give me a template that I can edit?
I think I'll get you a template, but I think if you just say, "Here are the three things," and send it to me, then I'll make sure we put it onto the, onto the template.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you, guys. Any other business that may come before the meeting? Go ahead, Rheta.
Very quickly, I meant to mention this when I was doing the PNC update. Just a reminder that the New Hampshire School Board Association puts on webinars. You should have all gotten emails. The webinars are free to us because we subscribe to get them. If you can't attend in person, a lot of them around lunchtime, you can access all of the recordings. So there's some very timely and relevant presentations.
Yeah.
And I encourage you to try to attend some.
Good. Thank you, Rheta. Anyone else?
Just an inquiry.
Yes.
How long do you think it'll be before we see the three things on the website?
The goal is to have this up one to three days.
Wow.
The goal is the first time.
Yeah, the first time may take a little longer.
I'm going to give us till Friday.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Go ahead, Jared.
Chair, just sticking with the public comment that was at last meeting, are we expecting any votes after non-public? That would be in public?
I don't anticipate any votes. I think that the two things that I'm bringing, one is around compensation and discussion of employees, and the other is around safety. So I don't believe that there'll be any votes taken out of non-public this evening. I wouldn't anticipate it. It's not to say that would be the board's discretion.
Other than potentially ceiling minutes?
Ceiling minutes, I would say, but I would not anticipate any other votes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? All right, so we do have non-public.
We do.
So you want to go under A first?
Please.
All right, so I'll need a motion to go under RSA 91A32A.
So move.
By Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline, do roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, we are in non-public. Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December.